Good afternoon. It is Friday, June 18th, 2021. This is a regular meeting of the City of Rehoboth Commissioners. I like to call this meeting to order at 2:06 PM. I'd like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I'd like the Secretary to recognize that all the Commissioners are present. I'd also like to identify up here, City Manager Sharon Lynn. To my right, City Solicitor Glenn Mendalis. Also, in, sitting in front here, is Building Inspector Matt Janis. And you have a new guest, or a new person to introduce to us, if you would.
I do. I'm pleased to announce that we hired about a month ago now, an Assistant Building Inspector, Mr. Corey Shenko. He comes to us from project management outside in private industry. And if you have any questions for him, he's certainly here to entertain them.
All right. Thank you. I want you to stand, and if you would, face the audience so we can start to recognize your face there, Corey. Okay. That's very good. Thank you very much. I also wanted to recognize Keith, Chief Keith Banks of the Police Department, Evan Milver, Projects Coordinator for City Rehoboth Beach, sitting on the right there in the red shirt and back, Kevin Williams, Public Works Director. Thank you all for being here today. With that, I want to welcome the Watchers. This is kind of a hybrid meeting. Of course, we've got the people at home that are watching this live streamed, but there are also, there's a potential for people to register at home to speak. I don't have anybody identified that would be speaking remotely, so we'll note that. Also, I'd like to, at the beginning of each meeting, remind everybody that support documents, documents that support our agenda items are embedded in the agenda. So if you go to our cityrehoboth.com website, on the right middle side of the page, click in the green area box there, the Legislative Portal, and then seek the date in the meeting you're looking for, and you should pop up the agenda with the, with the set of different support documents that we actually use here. With that, I'd like to identify, before we go any further, as I usually like to do at the beginning of the agenda, identify any changes to the agenda. Item of Old Business, number F, which is Amendment to the Permanent Compliance Process, I'm removing that from the agenda tonight. There will be no discussion. We're not ready to move forward on that yet. Also, item of Old Business, E, which is the Request for Proposal for Boat Services, removing that from the agenda. There will be no discussion of that. Also, Old Business, C, which is Amending Chapter 195, we're removing that from the agenda. There would be no discussion. However, for the last two items that have to do with the canal dock, I would like our City Solicitor to give a brief explanation of why we are deferring discussion on those two items tonight.
Sure, Mayor. Thanks. Earlier this month, you'll recall, during the workshop meeting, Commissioner Gossett raised a few questions about contractually and permitting and those sorts of issues relating to the dock. So I took some time over the last week and a half to contact Matt Spong, who did a lot of the permitting, a lot of the, a lot of help with the contractual stuff. And he sent me some documents. I did review them. And after reviewing them, I am of the opinion that there's loose ends that need to be resolved. So the city, the museum, and the Army Corps of Engineers kind of all know what their role and responsibilities are going forward with the dock project. I hate to be the one to have identified something that's going to cause a short delay, but I hope it is a short delay. I'm going to work with Kevin Williams, who has a history at the Army Corps of Engineers and relationships. So we should be able to get whatever revisions need to be made, get it moving pretty quickly. But that's the reason for the short delay on those items.
Mr. Mendalis, I have a question. It seems to me that I could understand perhaps delaying on the kayak awards since there are two bidders. We have only one bidder for the water taxi. And if I understand correctly, the issue here is insurance. Is that the issue?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it's partly the issue. I shouldn't say it's not the issue, but there are other issues relating to whether fees can be collected for use of the dock, and if fees are collected, where those fees can be deposited.
Okay. So if these are details, why would we, could we not award the, the people who are the water taxi folks, that particular proposal, award that contract, if there's only one?
Commissioner, respectfully, you know, I've taken this off the agenda. It's not intended to do any more talking, but there is much more examination of this issue that needs to come in front of us, and, and including in front of the museum folks who own the lease, if you will. So we're really, unfortunately, not able to do anything further at this point. Thank you. With that, we'll go to Approval of Minutes. We have four sets of minutes in front of us, a regular meeting held on May 21st, 2021, and special meetings, three special meetings, one held on September 29th, 2020, one held on April 27th, 2021, and one held on May 11th, 2021. Are there any corrections to any of those minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve that slate of four sets of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gay and a second by Commissioner Byrne to accept and approve the four sets of minutes in front of us. All those in favor of approval of the minutes as presented in front of us signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And the minutes are approved unanimously. Thank you very much. With that, we'll go to City Managers' Report, Approval of Street Aid Expenditures first, I suppose, or do you, whatever sequence you want.
No, we can do it first. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Everyone, good afternoon. We have two street aid expenditures, one to Delmarva Power in the amount of $10,160.80 for streetlights, and the second for Apple Electric, $1,317.50, also for streetlights. It's a total of $11,478.30.
So I would entertain a motion to authorize City Manager to pay the two bills as noted in the amount of $11,478.70.
I move approval. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Byrne and a second by Commissioner Srinawski to approve Delmarva Power and Apple Electric bills totaling $11,478.70. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. And the motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. With that, we'll go to the City, oh, go ahead.
Thank you. The Grove Park Canal Dock was open to the public last weekend, and residents and visitors can now launch a kayak from the dock or tie up briefly in their boat to unload and load supplies or passengers. There's been numerous photos circulated, and it looks like a very, very successful and happy, happy visitors there. Regarding the July 3rd fireworks that will be launched on July 3rd, the display is just two weeks away. And with that, on Saturday, after missing last year, we're expecting a very large crowd. The city will once again be using portable restrooms at various street ends and to augment facilities at the Baltimore and Wilmington Comfort Stations. These will be installed the morning of July 3rd. Portable bathrooms at street ends will be removed the following morning, and those at the Comfort Stations will be removed on July 5th. Again, that's to accommodate the many visitors we expect to have here. Road closures will be implemented to facilitate access and safety. Those street closures can be found on the city's website as we get closer to the event. Fireworks display will be visible all along the beach and boardwalk. The music at the bandstand starts at 8:00 PM. Fireworks will begin around 9:30. We now have two new dual electric vehicle charging stations. They're operational. They were placed last week. They are in four, four spaces on the east side of the Convention Center parking lot near the water tower. Charging stations are $1 per hour for the first three hours, and then $3 per hour after that. The users of the EV stations are still required to pay for parking. City's contractor is wrapping up today the annual maintenance activities at Grove Park and Stokely Street Park. In addition, the old playground equipment at Lake Girard has been removed, and we're awaiting delivery of updated accessible equipment to add to the Lake Girard Park. That's been ordered and will be installed when it's received later, later on this summer, early fall. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the City Manager? Commissioner Legree?
How long will those dumpsters be on, on surf? Is that, are they gone already today? They were there this morning.
As soon as the work is complete. Supposed to be later today.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a brief one. Because I'd like this to go on record, because I received a number of concerning emails when the e-vehicle charging stations were removed from Henlopen. I know there's good rationale to have removed them. And if you could just briefly give that rationale, City Manager.
Certainly. So this was a program started back in 2014. Then Mayor Mills, Commissioner, was pretty instrumental in conversing with some University of Delaware folks. They, at that time in 2014, wanted to ask that came forward and ask the city if the city would be interested in partnering with the University of Delaware to install these, these EV stations. I remember my first PowerPoint presentation that I did here in 2014. Then Commissioner Mayor Mills asked me to do that and proposed different, varying sites for that, and the Commissioner selected the, the site at the Henlopen Hotel. They were installed, two of them were installed by University of Delaware, all by them. And then our IT department, Mr. Hamby, was instrumental in making them run, if you will, and making them work. Various issues of, you know, not working, not continuing to work properly, they were reported for, I'd say, the last five or six years. And the IT department did a, did its job with working, working through those issues. University of Delaware folks became less responsive, I'll say, from when they were first installed in 2014. So that's the initial reason for the charging stations needing to be removed. And we put the two charging stations in the budget this year in the amount of $30,000, and thus you have them installed.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. With that, we're going to go to the City Solicitors' Report.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I wanted to report publicly is that we recall some time ago, the city auctioned the property at 84 Kent Street. At the time, the city did not have a deed, none unlike other properties that the city's had in its inventory for a very, very long time. So we had to undergo a quiet title petition with the Court of Chancery to get good title in the city. That hearing was held yesterday, and the court did enter an order confirming that good and unencumbered title is in the city of Rehoboth Beach. So that can go to settlement now.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, we'll go to Departmental Reports. The two reports from Building and Licensing and the police are embedded in the agendas. We're not going to hear those orally today. I have not identified any Board and Commission reports, so we'll move on to Committee Reports. We'll start off with the Animal Issues Committee. Commissioner Byrne, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Animal Issues Committee will meet for the first time face-to-face next Tuesday, first time in 15 months. We have, since last month, two new committee members coming on. I really look forward to that. What the mayor has asked us to do is to kind of give a heads-up if we have any new topics. This is not for discussion today. It's just a heads-up that there are a couple of new topics that'll be on the Animal Issues Committee, and this has come via correspondence from, from citizens and residents. One, they're asking the committee to take a look at the need for deer crossing signage. So I'll be reaching out to the, to the chief to get his input, and to the city manager as to whether there seems to be a need for that. But that'll be initially a discussion item next week. And then the second item has also come via correspondence, and that is folks expressing a concern about pesticides that are being sprayed on residential lawns through private vendors, and what the impact, the negative impact may be on, on both the songbird population and then also pollinators, but particularly the songbird population because that falls under the purview of the Animal Issues Committee. Thanks, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. With that, we'll go to the Environment Committee. Gee, that's Commissioner Byrne.
Yeah, again, thank you, Mayor. Quick, very quick update. Environment Committee met in this room, the first, I believe, committee meeting, the first face-to-face meeting after 15 months, about a week or so ago. Two things that, that we're working on, one that flows out of, of previous discussion about asking our restaurants to voluntarily ban single-use plastic straws. We are working with Solar3 and with a nonprofit named Plastic Free Delaware to design table placards that restaurants and bars can use to both educate folks about why it's not good to be throwing single-use plastic straws away into our environment and/or even into our landfills. And hopefully, the, the table placards will be kind of fun, entertaining, and educational. So that's moving ahead. And then the second item that we've discussed are the students that did the artwork on recycling, and it's been a partnership between Rehoboth Elementary and the Environment Committee. All, a number of those kids showed up yesterday after the last day of school at the bandstand, along with a couple of teachers, and we had one of our police officers, we had a couple of the junior, junior police officers for the day who were, who were fifth graders at the elementary. And they went out and put up 60 small posters like this on the building side of our street barriers that are out there to provide for outdoor dining. So as you're wandering up and down the avenue, you see these little posters, take a moment and think about our fifth grade kids and learning about recycling in our city. And so it was a thrill yesterday to do that. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to Street and Transportation Committee, Commissioner Pat Calusi, the Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. So there are three items that we spoke of at our last meeting, and specifically two have to do with potentially having the Board of Commissioners make a recommendation to allow the Streets and Transportation Committee to meet with Del Dot, perhaps, to discuss these. The first one is, and this has been brought up before, I do believe, there's a real need for a crosswalk on Rehoboth Avenue between Fifth Street and, not Fourth, let's see. Well, there's Christian Avenue. So there's, there's basically 1,000 feet between those, those two, the two crosswalks there, one at, at Christian and one at Fifth Street. And people who are going to, well, Dogfish in particular, Chesapeake in Maine, they always jaywalk. I mean, there's no choice. I mean, if you go down to a, to a crosswalk and then walk back up the other side, that's, that's a quarter mile on its own. So nobody's going to do that. I really think, and this was the consensus of our committee, that we would like to sit down with Del Dot and talk about the possibility, since this is a Del Dot street, the possibility of having a crosswalk on Rehoboth Avenue somewhere halfway between, it's roughly where Dogfish is, and across to, I guess would be Love's Liquor. So that was consensus. We'd like to have, put this on the workshop agenda and have the Commissioners discuss it of whether or not the Commissioners would be interested in allowing the committee to speak with Del Dot on this subject.
Thank you, Pat. Let me go ahead and comment one at a time, if you don't mind.
Sure.
You know, we have an internal policy that was announced publicly by me that requests for outside agencies to address the group come through the City Manager and/or the Mayor. That's so that we have an awareness, et cetera. So I thank you for, for doing that. Before it comes in front of us, or what I would like to see is, because I know this has been ongoing for a while, even when you, before you were Chair, and probably when you were Chair the previous time, that I would really like to see your committee generate a full report on it and let us know about past committee conversations, because I know you've had those conversations. And I know we've had past engineering and analyses done, and I'd like those all put into a folder so that we can see what's done. By example, I think it was Beacon Engineering, probably, that came and did some analysis of crosswalks. And I'd like to see what he's done, how your committee came up with where the locations are, proposed to be, so that, so that we can have a better understanding and also have done perhaps a little homework before getting Del Dot in, or before even deciding to get Del Dot in. By example, when Beacon Engineering, I don't remember them ever bringing a report forward, but I do recall, I think, talking with the principal at one time, that, you know, adding a crosswalk's a great thing, but it also potentially, depending where you put it in that block, could remove three spaces at each curb area. So that's 3, 6, 9, 12 spaces. And I think that having that information ahead of time would be useful. So, so keep that in mind before we...
Yeah, I mean, we do have some data that we would, from, from previous meetings in the, in the past, that we could definitely supply to the Commissioners. Yeah, there would be definitely parking spaces that would be lost. I don't know that we want to leave it up to the committee to decide where exactly it makes sense for that particular crosswalk. We were hoping that the conversation with Del Dot, that that, that they perhaps would come up with that. But we certainly could take a stab at it, so that's no problem there.
Well, and again, getting, getting a report from Beacon Engineering, I'm pretty sure it was Beacon Engineering did some analysis before retrieving that, so we can have it would be very helpful.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
So the second item is a curb project on Columbia Avenue at the intersection of Grove and Columbia. There's a fire hydrant there on the corner, and the city has marked the street with yellow paint to try to keep people from parking there, but they park there anyway, particularly people who go to, across the streets of rural farms. So what's been done now is something on a temporary basis, and we were looking to, I guess, and I don't know what you would like us to provide you at this stage. This happens to be in front of the Suzanne and Jeffrey Good's house, and they did propose and give us a drawing of a curb that I'm not sure, well, I will say that there wasn't a consensus that that was necessarily the solution. So we would like to see a solution from someone who could be the right people to give us that, that solution. Temporarily, they've got cones up there to try to keep people from parking. So I don't know how you want to handle that one, Mayor, but this one is, there was a consensus among the committee that something should be done there because there's visibility issues if you're turning onto Grove, as well as the fire hydrant, that there's people parking there, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I do think there's a good rationale for, for putting curb there. I watched some of your committee meeting and appreciate you and your committee's time on it. I, rather than bring it in front of the Commissioners, I talked with the City Manager, I believe the appropriate avenue was just to direct the City Manager to contact Del Dot and do that. I don't, I don't know that we need to stick our fingers into it.
That's fine.
And it would delay response to that. So, next item.
So the last one would not have to necessarily have Del Dot involved, although if they'd like to pay for it, we'd love to have them involved. It would be a streetscape on King Charles. And the reasoning for that is really, it comes down to putting a median in the center of the street. There's been a lot of talk about putting crosswalks on King Charles, but the street is too wide for a crosswalk. You actually have to have a place for people to stop in the middle, after a certain number of feet, and I don't know what the number of feet is off the top of my head, but something would have to be potentially in the middle of the street. Just by example, let's see, King Charles is 62 feet wide, and it's the same width as Bayard. So, and Bayard does have a median. And in fact, Scarborough is only 54 feet wide, and they have a median. The other benefit to this, of course, is adding trees to the, to our city, as well as, you know, the effect of heat islands that we would, would, would be able to, perhaps, make it better on that street to have a median. Certainly would allow for crosswalks, but right now, there are no crosswalks, and so anyone who's going across the street, particularly anyone with, that has, we can't even have ADA there because people can't really make it across the street using a wheelchair or so. Anyway, I think that that, would love to have that on the agenda as a discussion item for the Commissioners, if you would like the committee to come up with some ideas of drawings. I suspect we could do that, but, you know, it's up to you, Mayor, what you'd like us to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Let me give some thought to that, because the next step seems to be request funding.
That's right. I mean, this would be for next, it would be for next year, for sure.
Deferred till we get to the budget process. You know, I've spoken about such a project for years, so I think, I'm sure you know that I would be favorable to this type of thing, especially with heat islands. Heat islands are areas of grass instead of asphalt. So the grass absorbs water, but it also absorbs heat and dissipates heat. And of course, you would have treed areas or landscaped areas under those. So I'm a big fan of that. So I'm not sure that your group needs to do any more. I think we'll look at funding. Also, I've got some drawings somewhere, some years ago, just like the crosswalk engineering. Somebody has engineered some crosswalks in that area that have bump outs with medians on it. So let me dig out those drawings if I can find it, and we'll keep that in front of us. With that, any other comments from the Commissioners on any of the committee reports?
The only thing else, other thing I would say is our, our next committee meeting is July 22nd at 10:00 AM, and it will be in this room. It'll be our first live meeting, if you will.
Very good. Any, any other questions from Commissioner Legree?
Do, do medians slow folks down a little bit, just by their presence?
That would be a question, question for the chief, I would think.
Chief, do medians slow traffic down? I don't, it seems like traffic on Scarborough is a lot slower than it is on King Charles.
In most cases, yes, but obviously depends on how it's designed. Can't answer, I understand that, but yes, reasonably would slow traffic down.
I've seen studies that say it's the trees that slow them down.
Yeah.
The presence of the trees.
You bet. So we need tree, tree medians, then.
Right.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for your report. The next report is the Wilmington-Baltimore Avenue Streetscape Task Force, which I chair. We just had a meeting this week. The committee has been working very diligently on guidelines to give to our engineering design consultant. Our engineering design consultant is looking at a seven-block area, project area, which is the first two blocks of Baltimore Avenue, first two blocks of Wilmington Avenue, South Second Street, South First Street, North First Street, that vicinity. And they're looking at making, making the whole area more inviting, more pedestrian-friendly, more scooter and bicycle-friendly. And our committee has been working diligently on giving the designers guidelines. By example, at our last meeting, we decided that within our project area that we would recommend to the engineering designer that, to use shared bike lanes rather than separate dedicated bike lanes. And there's a rationale there, and, but I haven't had time to type it up yet, so more details will be coming. So shared bike lanes instead of designated bike lanes. We talked about minimum traffic lane widths. We talked about the use of turn lanes or not, and we decided yes and no. We talked about the use of turn lanes or not, and we decided, yes, in some of the streets, we wanted turn lanes available. Treatment of street ends on Baltimore and Wilmington, we thought were very important, and we wanted them to be somewhat of a gateway to try to invite people off the boardwalk onto those street areas and to have something special and inviting to do that. Possibly utilizing limited vehicle access areas at the ends of those streets, at the end of Wilmington and Baltimore, where maybe the last 20 feet, 40 feet, whatever, would prohibit vehicles, and it would be more of a, perhaps, whatever's designed, a landscaped area or a sitting area or whatever, allowing sufficient area for vehicles to turn around at street ends, since they're dead-end streets. We talked about minimum parking space dimensions, pedestrian circulation pathways, fancy name for sidewalks, that we wanted the sidewalks a minimum of width, and optimally, we wanted them as big as could be, that some of those areas, especially on Baltimore and Wilmington, are just barely even five feet or four feet. We wanted to see if we could expand the width of those or to promote pedestrian traffic there. And there's some other things. Again, we haven't written it up, but we'll be able to write it up and present it to the commission at the July 2nd workshop. Any questions? If not, then we'll move on to our next bit of business, which is liaison reports. We either have a liaison to the following agencies or representative from the agencies. I see Carol Everhart from the Chamber of Commerce, Rehoboth Beach, Dewey Beach Chamber of Commerce, coming up front. Welcome, Carol.
Thank you very much. I don't have a lot to report, but I can tell you that the parking plan that we're instituting in association with the chamber and Rehoboth Elementary School, we have 184 spaces available. We currently have 62 reserved, so those are already reserved spaces. They will be in to pick up their permits. You can't pick up your permit unless I know what's the automobile tag, who are we calling if something goes wrong, someone leaves their car there, that type of thing. The plan is working well. We have, it does not begin until June 22nd, so I anticipate we're going to come close to filling all of those spaces. The other piece of information is if you would like a candidate's form sponsored by the chamber, I would have to have that request by the end of next week. Our policy is two weeks after there's a final announcement of who's running, so we're happy to do it.
That note would be more for the candidates, correct?
Correct, correct. And the last thing I have, unless there's a question, is the dining guides are in. They have been delivered today. I brought a few in for you to share up there, and I'll make sure that we get more over here for you. Okay. Unless there's any questions, I think that's pretty much it.
Any questions for Carol? If not, thank you very much, Carol.
Thank you.
With that, the next liaison report would be from the Historical Society. Commissioner Legree, you're the liaison.
Thank you. I have three things. Number one, the museum, remind everybody the museum's open. It's open. And summer hours are Monday to Friday, 9:00 to 3:00, and Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 to 1:00. And we have tags for your car, because that's a metered lot now, so tell the folks that go and get a tag to hang on your mirror before paying the kiosk, which is quite a ways away, so that would, that'll be a help. Number two, they're having Dinerama, where you can buy chances, buy them at the museum, and it's five bucks a chance or five for 20 bucks, and you get like, I think, $3,000 for grabs for coupons to eat at some 17 of the city rest eateries. So go to the museum, buy some raffle tickets, and get some free lunches. On the 22nd of June is a discussion called Beginning of the Restaurant Renaissance in Rehoboth. And what's happening, Bob Thompson is having a discussion with some of the real pioneers, Sidney Arts and Libby York, Terry Plow, people that really know what's going on, and it'll be a great discussion, and nobody can do it better than Bob Thompson. Anyway, that starts at 4:00 on the 20... 22nd, I said 22nd. And just call up, it's 35 seats, and after that, they're gone, but it'll be a great discussion. Nobody can do it better than Bob, so think about that, 22nd of June, discussion on restaurants in Rehoboth, and some of the pioneers will be there to answer questions. It'll be great. If you want to make a reservation, you can do, I think you can do it online, but you can also call 227-7310 and talk to someone there, and it's free for members of the Historical Society, and five bucks for people who aren't members. And this was going to have everybody join the Historical Society, save that five bucks, so come one, come all. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that, we'll go to Main Street, Commissioner Schranowski, liaison or...
Dan Sligo is here.
There he is, very good.
Good afternoon, city manager, mayor, and commissioners.
Dan, introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dan Sligo from Rehoboth Beach, Main Street.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things I wanted to talk about. Main Street, we have created a newsletter for, to distribute out of different things going on around town, from events to just different items we want to talk about, so it's been very successful. We're sending our fourth edition out on June 30th, so we're very excited about that. Also, we're working on many events for the fall, as the city manager's aware of. We're working towards some events, and so we're excited about the Community Unity Dinner. We're bringing that back. Also, we're working on Odie's Dance for, for, what am I thinking of? Rehoboth and Bloom, so it's a fundraiser for Rehoboth and Bloom and some other items. Also, we're working on with, through social media, with our social media manager, for downtown, they need help, so we're working on a campaign to try to promote, to get people to apply downtown, because businesses are still hurting for help. So we're really, through our social media, working on that. Also, we're working on a Respect Rehoboth campaign, where there's people who have more patience and understanding. We've created a wonderful poster to take downtown for every single merchant and residence, and also for rentals, so people just have more patience and understanding, because people are short-staffed, so we also wanted to create a campaign for that. Also, we have our guidebook here, and we're distributing that to all the hotels out on Route 1 and downtown to get people to come downtown. And there's coupons in here, so we've extended the coupons for another year, so I just want to let everyone know that, and that's all I have right now.
Very good. Any questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll go to the liaison at Cape Pen Lopez Senior Center, Commissioner Byrne.
Thanks, Mayor. The Senior Center, just a few blocks away from us, continues to operate on unlimited hours because of COVID, and of course, the senior population that's more vulnerable. However, they also have the greatest percentage of vaccinations, so they're operating right now, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. They are gradually increasing the number of in-person programs and eliminating the virtual programs, and by the end of this month, I think all the virtual programs will be eliminated, and there'll be many more in-person programs going on. They're also beginning to offer trips on the new bus that they have, local trips for those that need to get to a doctor, that need grocery shopping, pharmacy, and then adventure trips, that Christiana Mall, places like that, Philadelphia and so on. So all of those things are kicking back into place. And then the last thing is that if any of you are members or those listening and are frustrated by parking, the parking signs designating participation at the Senior Center from 10:00 a.m. until 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon, the signage is coming. It's not there yet. We, I understand we have the signage, it's just a matter of having the staff time and power to get it up and going, because we're dealing with limited staff right now. So we understand the frustration that some may be having, but the signage is coming, and it'll designate specific parking for use at the Senior Center. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? If not, we'll move to the next item, which is a permanent compliance hearing for Ava's 29 RB LLC to operate a new restaurant serving alcoholic beverages known as Ava's Pizzeria and Wine Bar pursuant to the City of Rehoboth Beach Municipal Code, Chapter 215 Restaurant. The restaurant will be located at 29 Baltimore Avenue. Do we have any representatives here from that agency? Would you mind just standing at the microphone and telling us your name?
Thanks for having us. I'm Chris Agarabi. I'm the owner of the new restaurant going in.
That's my sneaky way of figuring out how to pronounce Agarabi. Thank you very much.
You nailed it.
And would you mind standing up and giving, are you with him?
I am, yes.
What's your name?
My name is John Mason. I'm the opening general manager.
I wouldn't have had any trouble with John Mason, so, thank you very much. You can have a seat until we're ready. Glenn, you wanted to give your spiel, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So commissioners, as you know, this is a process that the commissioners go through whenever a restaurant serving alcohol is opening in the city. There's other events that trigger it as well, but this is a new restaurant at the former Jake's, and then, what was the plate?
Steben Blues.
Right, so that's where we are on this one. So the code requires that this permanent compliance be obtained before the restaurant could open with alcohol. A few things that you're required to consider during this hearing today come from the Restaurant Chapter, that's Chapter 215 of the City Code. It says a permanent compliance or a supplemental permanent compliance shall not be issued to the applicant or to the Delaware Alcoholic Beverage Control Commissioner or Commission except by the favorable vote of a majority of the members of the city commissioners. In reaching their decision, the commissioners shall consider the following factors, including but not limited to, first, whether the applicant has demonstrated that the establishment's primary purpose will be that of a restaurant or dinner theater, as defined in this chapter; second, whether the establishment meets all of the city's applicable zoning and licensing provisions; third, whether the establishment would be a detriment to the peace, order, and quiet of the neighborhood in the city; fourth, whether the establishment will have an adverse impact on the neighboring properties or on the City of Rehoboth Beach, considering the impact on traffic, parking, and noise; fifth, whether the applicant had made any false representation or statements to the city's employees or the commissioners in order to induce or prevent action by the city, not only in regard to the pertinent pending application under this chapter, but also in regard to the issuance of a building permit or business license for the subject establishment. So those are the considerations you're supposed to have in mind as you hear this. There are a number of things in your packet, and we'll put these all on the record of the proceeding. First is a public notice. Notice was given by the city secretary on May 26, 2021, when she posted it. It was also sent to residents within 200 feet of the proposed location. It was published in the Cape Gazette on Tuesday, June 1, 2021. It was published in the Coast Press on Wednesday, June 2, 2021, and published in the Delaware State News on Thursday, June 3, 2021. You also have a report of the Chief Building Inspector, Matt Janis, who will be delivering this report in just a moment. That is dated June 18, 2021, and note that it's the revised report. Next, you have a letter, thankfully, from John Mason, and not from Mr., because I can't say the name either, and it's a...
Agarabi.
It is a letter to the city manager requesting a transfer of the liquor license dated May 14, 2021. There's also the application for a permanent compliance. It's stamped into the city on May 18, 2021. There is a sample menu that was also received by the city on May 18, 2021. And then there's two floor plans. The first one is a floor plan that's identified as Jake's Seafood House. I presume that's the existing floor plan, and there's a, there's a second one that has Ava's Pizza Tenant Fit-Up is the name of the drawing, it's sheet number 82, and that is a proposed floor plan dated, it looks like December 12, 2017, is what I have. And that's what I have in the packet, commissioners. Are there any questions for me?
Thank you, Glenn. I do want to make note that the support document embedded in the agenda has an original report, and as the city solicitor mentioned, there's a revised report as of today, so when we hear the report, for accuracy, we'd like to just identify what the different changes are, so that we are all on the same page. With that, we'll go to the building inspector's report. Matthew Janis, please. By the way, while he's setting up, I believe you also own Theo's Steakhouse, is that correct? Which is mid-block, south side, second block of Baltimore Avenue, in case anybody doesn't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon. Before you today is a case number 1019-03. It's a permanent compliance, and just a permanent compliance for Ava's Pizzeria and Wine Bar located at 29 Baltimore Avenue. If I may, I'd like to lay out a timeline of events here. In January, the applicant came to us for the building permit and was advised at that time to begin their process of the permit of compliance. We received the actual application in May under, under representation that the representative of Ava had hired. That representation could have possibly been misinformed that of the necessity to come before us today for that permanent compliance hearing, whereas we do have administrative permanent compliance. And those basically is if the floor plan hasn't changed enough, that doesn't represent, that doesn't require a trip before you today. However, in this application, a pizza kitchen has been added to this floor plan, so we feel that it warranted a trip before you today. Though it does decrease the seating of what was approved prior to Steaming Blues, it was a significant enough change in a floor plan, which is, you know, spoken to in our code, so that's why we're here before you today, and we're not doing it administratively.
Okay. This is an application for a new restaurant in a property previously operating as a restaurant. The space was occupied and operated by Jake's Seafood and, more recently, Steaming Blues. The following is a complete report for the application referenced above to be heard pursuant to Section 215-3. The applicant is John Mason of 18811 Beth Page Drive in Lewis, Delaware, 19958. The name of the restaurant will be Ava's Pizzeria and Wine Bar. The restaurant is located at 29 Baltimore Avenue, Rehoboth Beach, Delaware. Pursuant to the plans submitted, the following is true. The property is located at 29 Baltimore Avenue. The property is owned by TMC Investment Club, 100 Christiana Medical Center, Newark, Delaware. The area is a single-story building with proposed permanent seating dining in a C1 central commercial zoning district pursuant to Section 270-13C 3D. A restaurant serving alcoholic beverages is a permitted use. The restaurant areas, A, service area, kitchen facilities, storage, restrooms, employee stations, hallways, and utilities, proposed as listed as 1514, and I've calculated 1693, so there's a little bit of difference there. The dining area is 2265, and I've calculated at 2132. I believe that's because aisles were not taken out of that calculation from their drafter. Permanent seating in dining area, and we'll discuss this as we move through here, the applicant listed it as 126, I have calculated as 116. And then the bar area, which is a topic of discussion, we have listed here in the drawings, excuse me, the applicant has listed as 576, but what I've calculated is actually 491 here, and I'd like to show you my example here on this, if I could. So if you see, the main entrance to the restaurant here is with the double doors, and there is a certain amount of aisle width that is required for that, and it's this aisle that makes me believe that I question the authenticity of these actually being bar seats and bar tables, though it's in the bar area, and certainly we can ask the applicant of this to, you know, lay out those tables before us, but I feel that that's more than likely a table service, because they are separated by the required aisles to get to the various different areas of the restaurant. So I have calculated as... So I have calculated as removing those aisles, it was about roughly 90 to 100 square feet, giving us 491 square feet for that. It does also change, that implication does change, the amount of seats. One would count either to the bar or the dining, to the dining of the permanent seated dining area. So certainly, again, we can ask the applicant what the intent of those tables are and let them spell that out. The bar seats as proposed, they're showing 16, but if we count those tables as the bar, they're actually up to 30 seats on that. The restaurant gross floor area is 4766.67 square feet. I have them as also 4766.67 square feet. Ratio of bar to permanent seating dining, again, this, it could waver back and forth depending on what we consider those tables. They have proposed as 12.7. I have calculated as 26%, but it's a rounding up of 25.8620689. So it's a little rounding up there. And again, that's affected if we count those tables as table service or do we count them as bar service. A fine example of this exact scenario is going to be Finn's, right down the street from us. They have very much the same scenario where you're walking in, there's tables. Those tables are of actual service. They're not for a patron to just go in, grab a drink, and sit there and consume their beverage. That's actual table service. So again, we might want the applicant to clarify what those tables are being presented as. Pursuant to Section 215-1, definitions, there is no patio area. The site also has available a total of zero parking spaces. The designated areas for proposed food, storage, and preparation are showed and labeled on the attached plan. The distance to the nearest property lines of nearest church, park, and residential lots are as follows. All Saints Episcopal Church is approximately 849.76 feet, minus the word miles, by way of North First Street right onto Olive Street. The closest public park is Lake Girard Park, 980 feet by way of North First Street. And the closest residential lot, I actually took this measurement from the middle of the lot, so it's 28 feet north on First Street, it's practically right beside the property. The applicant has stated the approximate percentage of revenue between the sale of alcohol and food is 30% alcohol and 70% food. There is a difference in their application to the state, which says 75% food and 25% alcohol. Authorization for the city to investigate is attached. Written and dated declaration by the applicant is attached, and the fee of $1,000 has been Any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners?
A couple of questions, if I may. Just curious, the floor plan presented here is over three years old as the date on it. Is that acceptable to take something of that nature?
I believe what happened here is the designer was the same designer that designed Steaming Blues and Jake's Seafood, so they just used their same floor plan. The floor plan is correct. It has been verified. We have inspected and matched that floor plan to what exists now.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners?
Well, just a comment. Thank you for the application. Thank you for the investment in our property that's been sitting vacant. We're looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to it.
We're excited.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. If you would stay, perhaps stay there, we'll let the applicants get up. You can indicate anything you want, but I think Matt wants you to address one question up there, so you can go ahead and...
I have, this will be my seventh restaurant. Yay. Lucky number seven. Those tables in every one of my restaurants, I have these tables called eight, nine, and 10, and they're high tops in the bar area that kind of abut a window. And they're always full-service tables. And to a T, every restaurant I have has those tables, except for one, it's a sports bar there where the windows are lower in the front, but we have, it's always eight, nine, and 10. They're kind of our lucky tables. So they're always something that usually side-facing, people can look out, but I think when you look at our P&amp;L, 70% food is what we stated, and 75% is what came across. The variance is probably from a lot of the to-go business we've been doing, so you're going to see a higher percentage of food. So we're a very food-first organization. Our restaurants always start in the kitchen. They don't start at the bar. And again, those are going to be service tables, just like the ones around the corner. High tops are very popular, and that's where they're always requested, even in Theo's down the street. So we're going to have service at those tables, if that's the question.
Pause one second. Matt, does that satisfy you? Does that meet your interpretation and calculations?
It absolutely does, and it brings down the numbers now for the percentages and the, so it puts the bias now towards the permanent seating dining and puts us back down to roughly what the applicant applied for is at 12.7% bar seating versus permanent seating ratio.
All right. Anything else you'd like to offer?
No, I'll take any questions. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to answer questions, but happy to, you know.
Well, you know, obviously, this process gets you to kind of lay out your plan here, and that's a plan that needs to be somewhat rigid. One of the things is I noticed there's no dance floor on here, which means you would not be able to have a dance floor unless you came back here, and I wanted to make sure you understood that.
Yep.
Also, we generally like to make sure that the restaurateurs understand that there's, and you would know from Theo's Steakhouse, that there needs to be screened trash area. And on your right side on North First Street, there is a gate there, and I noticed it's a reconfigured gate, but there's still a gate there, so we appreciate that screening the trash. I don't know if you have any qualms with any of the revised figures that we received, but they look, I would think, to be accurate. And there is one, there is one page that doesn't have initials on here, so I think that, you know, you'd be mad at all about doing those after the fact. And are there any further questions from the commissioners you want?
You still need to tour the public.
Well, yeah, I want to see if anybody else, any other commissioners had questions for Chris. If not, then this is a public hearing. Thank you, Chris. You can sit down. We'll go to the public. This is your chance to say how wonderful this is or how scary it is to you. So is there anybody who would like to speak in favor or not in favor? Carol Everhart, we'll need you to come to a microphone.
Although we can probably anticipate what she's going to say.
See there?
There we go.
Of course, you're not going to be surprised that we would speak.
Who are you?
Carol Everhart, President and CEO of the Rehoboth Beach Dewey Beach Chamber of Commerce. And we would welcome this business into town, and it's nice to see one coming in and not one going out. So I would speak in support.
Thank you, Carol. Any other members of the public would like to speak in favor or otherwise? 30 seconds. If not, then we're going to close the public portion of this meeting, and we go to deliberations among the commissioners up here. And if there's no discussion...
Well, I certainly, as Commissioner Byrne said, I'm really glad to see you move in there, and we hate seeing empty buildings, so we're looking forward to, I'm personally looking forward to your pizzas, so...
I don't think there's any question that pizza is very popular in this town, so.
With that, I'd like to entertain a motion. Does anybody...
Go ahead. No, no.
Well, let me get my little notes here. I have them right here. She says. Well, there it is. Same thing. All right. I would like to make a motion that we allow the city manager to issue a permit of compliance for Ava's at 29 Rehoboth. Oh, Ava's 29RB, what is that? LLC, okay. Ava's Rest Pizzeria and Wine Bar. I find the following to be true: Find that the proper application for a restaurant permit of compliance has been filed; That the proper fee has been paid; That the proper notifications have been made; That all parties wishing to be heard have been heard; That the primary purpose is that of a restaurant based on their application and menu submitted; That the restaurant meets the city's applicable zoning and licensing provisions; That the restaurant would not be a detriment to the peace, order, and quiet of the neighborhood and city; That the restaurant will not have an adverse impact on the neighboring properties or on the City of Rehoboth Beach considering the impact on traffic, parking, and noise; That the applicant had made no false statements to the city employees or the commissioners. Therefore, I make a motion that the city manager issue the applicant's a permit of compliance for the operation of a restaurant.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Pat Caluzzi and a second by Commissioner Ed Schronowski to authorize the issuance of a permit of compliance to Ava's Pizzeria and Wine Bar on the northwest corner of Baltimore North First Street. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'd like to do a roll call vote. Commissioner Legree?
I vote aye, and I've gone through the menu, and I can't wait.
Commissioner Schronowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Pat Caluzzi?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick Byrne?
Aye.
Commissioner Susan Gay?
Aye.
Commissioner Pat Gossett?
Aye, and welcome to the community on the second, for your second time.
And the chair votes aye, unanimous vote. We welcome you to your second store, our restaurant on Baltimore Avenue there. Thank you. Congratulations. You do not need to stay around. You're welcome to leave.
I'm going to go fresh.
If you like, there you go. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you both. With that, we're going to go to our first piece of old business, and that is to consider appointments, having to do with the elections coming up. The appointments would be Carl Pierce as Board of Elections alternate member, Wayne Steele as Inspector of Elections, Gary Wirt, John Welsh, and John Dewey as election officers. If there's no objections to those, I would entertain a motion to adopt or appoint the slate.
Is that moved?
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Schronowski and a second by Commissioner Byrne to appoint the slate as presented. Is there any further discussion? If not, then we'll do a group vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, and they are unanimously appointed to their respective positions. Thank you very much. With that, our next bit of old business is a follow-up on House Bill Number 146, which impacts municipal elections by proposing to integrate local and state voter registrations. I actually meant to put on the agenda the opportunity to vote, and I did not. So as far as the follow-up goes, all we can really say is that this was in front of the legislature, I think, yesterday or in the committee. It's come out of committee. There are, there is five days, I think, to be able to give opinions. I'm disappointed that we didn't come up with opinions to put forward because I've talked with other municipalities that actually oppose this and wanted to allow it so that the municipality made the decision, not the state. And unfortunately, I didn't put anything on the agenda, so we're not going to further address it unless anybody has just a comment. Nope.
Well, I have a related comment, actually, not specifically about that, but I just have to add that I am very disheartened by another voting bill that has been defeated, and that is the no-excuse absentee voting. Because it occurs to me that if this automatic registration of our residents goes through, and I do support the concept, I've said that before, I understand there are logistical issues, if it goes through, it means that a resident doesn't have to come to City Hall to register in person. But it also means, the defeat of the absentee bill means they have to come to City Hall each and every time there's an election or a referendum and vote unless they can meet one of the excuses. And, you know, I think that's, I think that's an unfortunate mixed bag, and we had no absentee during the pandemic last year, and it worked very well. So I guess, you know, if one of the things we're looking at is to have choices, I would ask the city solicitor, do we have a choice? Can we adopt our own absentee rules? I understand it wouldn't be for this year, but can we?
Under the state code, you're allowed to give additional reasons why you can't come to City Hall, but I think the state code specifically says there has to be a reason. It can't be, it can't...
Can't be no excuse.
No excuse, right.
Okay.
All right. So there's no further discussion on that.
All right, thank you.
We note that. Commissioner Gay, thank you very much. With that, we'll go to the next item of old business, which is consider adoption of a resolution defining a program for city-owned and leased light fixtures, primarily park, boardwalk, and streetlights to be selected to minimize the adverse effects of artificial light. As you notice in your support packet in the agenda, there is a resolution. It's version number two. If you recall, when we talked about this, I think, once or twice, at least once before this, I crafted the resolution based on a dark skies presentation by local citizens, as well as input from the Boardwalk and Beach Committee, as well as input from the Environment Committee. In the resolutions in front of you, there are two amendments I would like to consider if somebody's going to make a motion to adopt this resolution. And the two amendments have to do with the last two paragraphs. I'll read them for you and emphasize my proposed amendments. Therefore, the mayor and commissioners desire for all city-owned and leased light fixtures, primarily park, boardwalk, and streetlights to be selected as is feasible to minimize the adverse effects of artificial light, including through use of shielding, minimizing the amount of blue light in the nighttime environment by using a color temperature of 3,000 or less Kelvin, with implementation as light fixtures are replaced over time. The last paragraph, I've amended to furthermore the design of new and replacement lighting fixtures for parks, streets, and boardwalk, and any supporting equipment shall be approved by the mayor and commissioners to meet the character and aesthetics of the city. I put those two amendments in for two reasons. One is, if you recall last time, Commissioner Gossett mentioned to make sure that the leased light fixtures could comply. We haven't had time to talk with Delmarv Power, and frankly, I think probably the time to do that is when we're actually talking about replacing light fixtures. So we put in there "as is feasible." We thought that was reasonable because, again, this is giving direction to public works in our city administration, and I think it will do that, and they get the message. The second caveat or disclaimer is that we wanted to come back in front of the mayor commissioners so that we can have a say-so in it, but strictly for the larger sets of lights for parks, boardwalk, and streets, not for the wastewater treatment plan or not for our water filter plant and things like that. So those are the two amendments that I proposed in this version two. Is there any discussion?
Commissioner... Go ahead, Dave. Yeah, let me just say, I'm thrilled to see this in front of us as it is. This does come out of recent discussions on the Commissioner Legree's committee and the Environment Committee that I chair. I can say that the Environment Committee is 100% behind us and is thrilled to see this moving ahead. And what I have been saying, because this all flows out of the Dark Skies Initiative, an international initiative, and I think it's so appropriate that we are customizing it for the City of Rehoboth Beach, and that makes total sense to me. And I think this gives us direction. It gives us rationale for what we want to accomplish in this, and I'm 100% behind this, as is the Environment Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Legree?
I'm with Commissioner Burns and with you. We want to be apprised of and have a say in the major aesthetic areas in the town. That's why the boardwalk, the streets, and the parks are critical. We want them to be beautiful. We want them to demonstrate dark sky principles and save on light pollution and all the good things. However, it's changing all the time. I mean, it's changed, the color temperature recommendations have changed since we started talking about this. So the "as feasible" really comes in to play. Now, we suspect that the folks out at the garage and the parking area or the streets and...
...
and transportation, they'll use dark sky principles, but they should be able to choose it themselves, decide without having to come back to us. And that's why the mayor, I believe, put that in, and it makes good sense. So the Boardwalk Beach Committee is with you 100%.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution with the two amendments.
Mayor, I so move adoption with the two amendments.
And I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Dick Byrne and a second by Commissioner Jay Legree to adopt the resolution version two in front of us with the two amendments. We'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner, I keep starting on the same thing. I'm going to go to the other side first. Is there any members of the public that would like to comment? All right, thank you. I'm going to start on the other side. Commissioner Patrick Gossett?
Aye.
Commissioner Susan Gay?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick Byrne?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay Legree?
Aye.
Commissioner Ed Stranowski?
Aye.
And Commissioner Pat Caluzzi?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye, and the motion, the resolution, is unanimously approved. Thank you all very much for your work. And again, take it back to your committees. Thank you very much. And also, when you see the three citizens noted here, be sure to thank them also. With that, we'll go to the next item of old business, which is...
Nope, not the rule.
It would have been?
New business?
Yep.
Dark sky, RFP, permanent compliance, setting the tax rate.
Yep.
Okay. Next item of business for us is to set the city real estate tax rate for the tax year beginning July 1. Can you read that? Or, yeah, if you wouldn't mind reading it?
I can read that. So this is, this is an ordinance to establish the tax rate or the tax on real estate and improvements thereon within the city of Rehoboth Beach for the tax year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. Whereas Section 24B1 of the Rehoboth Beach City Charter provides that annually, the mayor and commissioners shall establish the rate of tax on real estate, including improvements thereon, per $100 of assessed value. And whereas the mayor and commissioners desire to set the rate of tax on real estate for the tax year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, at six cents per $100 of assessed value, be it ordained by the commissioners of the city of Rehoboth Beach and session met in a manner following to wit Section 1. The tax on real estate for the tax year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, shall be six cents per $100 of assessed value, and this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the commissioners of the city of Rehoboth Beach.
Bottom line, folks, is that there are no recommendations to raise the tax. It's going to be staying the same, the tax rate. With that, is there any comment from the public that wants it raised? No. All righty. Hearing no favorable comment to raise it from the members of the public, I'll accept the motion to adopt the ordinance as presented to us.
I'm so moved.
And who's second? So we have a motion by Commissioner Susan Gay and a second by Commissioner Patrick Gossett to adopt the enormous ordinance in front of us establishing the tax rate on real estate and improvements for the tax year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, essentially being the same tax rate as previous years. With that, I'll do a group call. All those in favor of approving the ordinance as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? No. The ordinance is passed unanimously. Thank you very much. With that, we'll return to submission of nominating petitions for commissioners' approval as to qualification of candidates for the annual municipal election scheduled for this August 14, 2021.
Yes, Mayor. Commissioners?
Excuse me, do I need to recuse myself?
No, no, you can even vote yourself.
I might do that.
There are four candidates. I'll name them alphabetically.
Do you normally give a summary of what we are judging here?
I've read from the charter before. I don't know that I do it every year. I'm happy to find it.
Because it's, we're looking for age.
Right.
Make sure there's a minimum age. We're making sure there are resident or a non-resident, confirming that. Let's pause a minute and let's just review, if you don't mind.
Take me just a moment to find it.
Before, before manner of holding elections.
Sorry about this.
Section 6.
Section 6. But there's, where does it say? Age and, I thought it was before Section 6. I always have a hard time finding.
I'm sorry, Section 7.
Section 5, right?
I think it's Section 7, Paragraph D.
Section 7, Paragraph D. Section 7, Paragraph D.
What you're looking for, qualifications of a voter?
That. No, we're looking for qualifications to run candidate.
It's the top paragraph, first paragraph in one of those pages.
I think it's up here. Yeah, so it's the end of Section 3.
Again, the commissioners are the judges of qualifications, so I'd just like to reiterate what we...
Yeah, I'm going to read the entire Section 3. So 3A says, "The government of the city and the exercise of all power conferred by this charter, except as otherwise provided herein, shall be vested in the commissioners of Rehoboth Beach. The commissioners of Rehoboth Beach shall consist of seven members to be chosen as herein after provided, all of whom shall be citizens of the United States of America. One of said commissioners shall have the title of mayor of the city of Rehoboth Beach with duties herein after to be prescribed, and who shall also be the president of the commissioners of Rehoboth Beach. Each of the seven commissioners of Rehoboth Beach, at the time of the approval of the commissioners' qualifications by the commissioners as herein after provided, or at the time of the commissioner's appointment, as the case may be, shall have attained the age of 21 years of age." Any question about that? "Age of 21 years of age, not less than three of the commissioners shall be designated resident commissioners. A resident commissioner shall be a bona fide resident and domiciliary of the city. The commissioner with the title of mayor of the city of Rehoboth Beach shall also be a bona fide resident and domiciliary of the city, and shall have been domiciled in the city of Rehoboth Beach for a period of at least 12 months immediately preceding the date of the election. The other three commissioners must either have the qualifications of a resident commissioner as defined above, i.e. a bona fide resident and domiciliary of the city, or be a freeholder of real estate located within the city. If any of the commissioners or the mayor fails to retain the qualifications as aforesaid during the term of office, the commissioner or mayor shall ipso facto vacate office. The commissioners shall be judges of the qualifications of their members." So that last sentence is important. "The commissioners shall be judges of the qualifications of their members." So you have to be a United States citizen. You have to have attained the age of 21. Not less than three commissioners shall be designated resident commissioners.
And if you're a non-resident, you have to be a freeholder.
Freeholder.
And how do we determine age and residency?
Typically use the driver's license. I believe we've done that in the past, right?
All right, all right, very good. Now I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Okay. As I said, these will be in alphabetical order, and I'll read one at a time and then ask the commissioners for a vote. Timothy J. Bennett, a non-resident property owner of the city of Rehoboth Beach, filed a nominating petition for the office of commissioner on Saturday, June 5, 2021, at approximately 10:35 a.m. Mr. Bennett provided a Pennsylvania driver's license proving that he has attained the age of 21. The city's tax records show that Mr. Bennett is a freeholder of property within the city of Rehoboth Beach. The nominating petition filed has 25 signatures. 25 of the 25 signatures were verified to be registered voters of the city of Rehoboth Beach. I'll make one note. Mr. Bennett is going to settlement on his home in Pennsylvania on June 23. His home in Rehoboth Beach will be his primary residence. Therefore, he will be a resident property owner of the city of Rehoboth Beach after June 23.
Very good. Thank you. So I just added another note that we have to make sure that obviously they file a petition with the correct number of signers on there. With that, we're looking for any discussion, but the motion would end up being that approves...
Motion to certify the candidacy. Certify the candidate.
Certify, move to certify the candidate.
I move to certify the candidacy of Tim Bennett.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Stranowski and a second by Commissioner Jay Legree to certify the candidate, Mr. Tim Bennett. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll, can we do a group vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. And he is certified unanimously. Thank you very much.
Richard A. W. Byrne, a resident property owner of the city of Rehoboth Beach, filed a nominating petition for the office of commissioner on Friday, May 14, 2021, at approximately 10:28 a.m. Mr. Byrne provided Delaware driver's license proving that he has attained the age of 21. The nominating petition filed has 22 signatures. 22 of the 22 signatures were verified to be registered voters of the city of Rehoboth Beach.
Very good. You're allowed to offer discussion or just go ahead and offer a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the petition of Richard Byrne.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Pat Caluzzi and a second by Commissioner Ed Stranowski to certify the candidacy of Commissioner Richard Byrne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Opposed? He's unanimously certified as a candidate for the upcoming municipal election. Congratulations. Go ahead.
Rachel A. Macha, a non-resident property owner of the city of Rehoboth Beach, filed a nominating petition for the office of commissioner on Thursday, June 3, 2021, at approximately 4:07 p.m. Ms. Macha provided a Florida driver's license proving that she has attained the age of 21. The city's tax records show that Ms. Macha is a freeholder of property within the city of Rehoboth Beach. The nominating petition filed has 12 signatures. 12 of the 12 signatures were verified to be registered voters of the city of Rehoboth Beach.
Very good. I'll open it for a discussion or a motion.
So move that we certify Rachel Macha.
Second.
We have a motion to certify Rachel Macha as a candidate from Commissioner Jay Legree and a second by Commissioner Ed Stranowski. All those in favor of certifying Rachel Macha?
I have a question.
Discussion?
I just have a question. You had said that Tim Bennett, who had registered as a non-resident, would be a resident as of June 23. So then he would, he is essentially running as a resident commissioner, right? Because I just heard you say that Rachel Macha is running as a non-resident commissioner. So we can't have two running as non-resident because we already have two non-residents, right?
I think you could have them run, just the highest vote getter would...
Right, but I guess the point I'm making is we don't actually have that issue because the one previous non-resident will be a resident as of next week. So we really only have Rachel Macha as the non-resident, the Florida resident.
Presuming that settlement occurs in Pennsylvania, and yes, that's right, you only have one non-resident.
Okay, just verifying that.
Very good. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call the question. All those in favor of certifying Rachel Macha as a candidate in this year's municipal election, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the motion carries, and Rachel Macha is certified candidate.
Mary A. Sharp, resident property owner of the city of Rehoboth Beach, filed a nominating petition for the office of commissioner on Monday, June 7, 2021, at approximately 12:32 p.m. Ms. Sharp provided Delaware driver's license proving that she has attained the age of 21. The nominating petition filed has 18 signatures. 18 of the 18 signatures were verified to be registered voters of the city of Rehoboth Beach.
Thank you. I'll open it for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion to certify the candidacy of Mary A. Sharp.
Second.
Well, you have a motion by Commissioner Susan Gay and a second by Commissioner Patrick Gossett to certify Mary A. Tony Sharp. All those, is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor of certifying Mary Sharp signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Tony Sharp is a certified candidate. Thank you. Welcome. Congratulations. With that, we'll go to Commissioner announcements and comments. I would just like to indicate that June 25 is a rescheduled bike trail dedication and ribbon cutting outside the city for that little connector between Rehoboth Avenue and Church Street. And I've been asked to speak and say a few words there. I did have go by there, and a constituent mentioned that there were some Big Belly trashcans out in that vicinity on the trail. And I've asked the city manager to just explain real quick why city trashcans are out on that trail area.
Thank you, Mayor. The state project, the Del Dot, on August 20, 2020, penned an agreement with the city of Rehoboth Beach that was signed by Deputy Attorney General, former Mayor Paul Coons, and a Director of Planning from Del Dot, including their Finance Department, Del Dot's Director of Finance. In that agreement, the sponsor, which is the city of Rehoboth Beach, will be responsible for the maintenance and day-to-day operations of all elements constructed as part of this agreement to include, but not limited to, bike path and sidewalk pavement, snow removal to include protected bike path along Rehoboth Avenue, fencing, pavement markings, grass cutting, and trash pickup. So that's, the agreement is written and signed and approved in 2020.
Very good. Thank you. Just FYI, so we've got a little responsibility outside of town.
Does that include the cut through by the hotel and everything? It's outside the city? We're going to be maintaining that?
Yes. So signed by former Mayor Paul Coons and obligated us to do that.
Who maintains the rest of the trail?
Del Dot maintains and also the state park.
Is there a time limit on the city's commitment to maintain that section?
There's no time limit, but, you know, we would certainly do that as timely as possible.
I mean, number of years that we're committed to?
Oh.
Sound it indefinite.
In perpetuity, yeah. All right.
Very good. Thank you very much. Are there any other Commissioner announcements or comments?
Just one thing, mention a housekeeping order for all of us. The performance evaluation for the city manager is due back to the Personnel Committee by June 25. If everybody would please keep that deadline, I would appreciate it. And it's also outlined as to the following calendar of how that will go forward. Also, I think we all know that July 13, the governor is lifting the emergency order. So we, as a city, also have to do some housekeeping, and I hope that we can see that on the next workshop agenda with regards to some points that are within our own emergency order and how that is affected by the governor lifting the statewide order.
Correct. You beat me to it. You beat me to it. Any other commissioner comments? Go ahead.
I'm going to be attending that ribbon cutting ceremony. That's a tremendous benefit to bikers going outbound. And it's a wonderful thing that Del Dot did that. As you go outbound, I would remind everybody that that crosswalk, when you cross the, I've cheated for quite a while. When you cross that crosswalk, you can't see very well to the left and cars coming through the church street stoplight don't have but a few seconds to see you. So, pay attention. Cars southbound down, I guess it's, Corcoran drivers, is, they can see you. So, be aware, we're gonna, hopefully, we don't have any wrecks on that area because it's quick.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I got run over this morning, so it's quick.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that, we'll review future meeting dates. Thursday, June 24, I have at 10 a.m. is a special meeting to conduct a consecutive, conduct an executive session for ClearSpace. Wednesday, June 30 is the ClearSpace Appeal at 10 o'clock. Thursday, July 1, at 10 a.m. is the ClearSpace Overflow if we need it. I'm hoping, hopefully, we don't. I would like to not. I'd like to resolve it Wednesday, but if we need to, there's an overflow date. And then Friday, July 2, at 9 a.m. is the workshop meeting. If you recall, we set that date at the last meeting because of the holiday schedule there. In terms of content on future agendas, as Commissioner Patrick Gossett mentioned, yes, the state of emergency is ending and there are certain actions that we need to take. By example, Meterless Monday, I believe Glenn, is linked to our state of emergency. And with the state of emergency being rescinded, we need to do something a little different. There's some other elements that we need to look at also. Commissioner Stranowski asked to have parking limits on the circle looked at. We'll put that on the July workshop agenda, provided that the chamber gives us a little results of a poll in time. And then, if you recall, Commissioner Stranowski asked for a discussion of outside music on outdoor patios. I've talked with him. I have suggested that. Nothing would be done this summer because it's such a big topic that it can't be rushed and the public needs to talk about it. And because we're still in development of parameters for outdoor dining post-pandemic, that I would like to bundle those two together and we'll talk about those in the off-season. Is there any other comment from the commissioners? Any citizen comment from the public?
Good afternoon, Walter Brittingham, 123 Henlopen Avenue. I think every Streets and Transportation Committee meeting in the past 20 years has talked about, at the roundabout, the visibility between the lighthouse and the entry to Rehoboth. And every year that comes up, I know that's a facetious comment. The roses, they're still there. They keep coming back. I don't, yeah, I guess Queen Elizabeth is the person that's responsible for that, but damn roses need to be taken down. They need to be gone out there right now. The hell with them. If it's so dangerous and people can't be seen in the crosswalk there, they ought to go. And they just ought to go from one end all the way down to the sign. And the same thing. But it wasn't on the most recent agenda. Nothing gets said about it and it's just seriously wrong. Back in October, I started about the bicycle regulations that will sunset at the end of June this year. There is legislation supposedly been entered at legislature to not have it sunset. And this board has not had it put on the agenda and you're hard pressed because you can't talk about it. I put a call into Ernie and Leonard's talking to Mr. Schwartzkoff. We don't know what the bicycle lobby will do, but people aren't stopping, the bicycles aren't stopping, the mopeds aren't stopping. I don't even know what some of the mopeds are called, what regulates their wheel size. Can the police do anything, what police we have? But now the cars and motorcycles and mopeds are running the stop sign. God help any of you run into or get run into by these people and we need to be doing something about it. I tell you to those that do not know, within the past week, Del Dot, in the middle of the morning, that being early morning hours, installed out at the Church Street traffic light, two green boxes. And they have areas on them, one for as you go west, the one on the left making a turn to Church Street to the west, to the Y, and on the one on the right, straight and right. That is a big help and it will be beneficial to the people out there that they have a right to be on the roadway and thanks to Del Dot for doing that. I was one of the people asked the question about the big belly dumpsters and nobody wanted to tell me how much they cost. So, I said, "They're a couple thousand dollars." And people said, "Oh, they're way more than that." So, I thank the city manager, not for timely manner, but for the report on what happened. I don't know why, west of the Canal Bridge, not in the city of Rehoboth Beach, on a piece of land that we really do not control, that we were gonna put up a couple of big bellies out there. And I have pictures of it, but it doesn't matter. I think it's deplorable. We discussed about the canal bank back when Paul was here and nothing got done. And here, we're up with another thing. What's the word?
Perpetuity?
Is that the word? Is that how long that he signed the agreement for?
Or what, the canal lease?
No, no, the trash. You're talking about the trash?
For the maintenance.
For the bicycle trail maintenance?
That between, the path between Rehoboth Avenue and Church Street.
No, no ending date, I believe. What I understood is there's no end date.
Okay, that's...
Imperpetuity.
And its trash trucks and its snowplow and the people out there taking care of the trash and the fence. Why, we couldn't have $185 trash came with a lid, the gray barrel tops, out there. But why we put ones out there for thousands of dollars outside the city? Folks wake up, this is just plain wrong. And the signage, the maintenance of the fence, security, low level. Rehoboth Center gets that 911 call. Go ahead, look at the clock. But Rehoboth Center gets the 911 call and where does it go? You all have no idea what happened there. Where does it go? And that's wrong. You're not doing your responsibility. You should have informed about this ahead of time, renegotiated. It's wrong that the city's funds are being spent out there. It is a wonderful project. It's been done very well. We lost some vehicle wits, travel lanes, but this is wrong that forever we have to take care of it and the liability with it. That means for minor things, we have to send the police out there. Yes? We are responsible for it, are we not? Or, excuse me, no pressure, or you don't know. But every one of you should have known and it should have been in the blueprint, in the agenda, and it should come back up. Del Dot knows nothing about it. The state is closed today. Found out about it by accident where it came from and people that were partying to the conversation, some of it slipped out. I shouldn't be standing here telling you about this and it ought to come back up.
Walter, you have one minute.
I don't need anymore.
No.
We've run out of five hours. It needs to get through your heads and you need to do something about it.
Thank you, Walter. Any other members of the public like to speak, say anything? Can be less complimentary or more complimentary. Either way, with that, I want to thank everybody for a good meeting, I thought. And the meeting is adjourned at 4:44...
3:44.
3:44.
3:44 p.m.